Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our meeting. If you'd all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Erin, please take a roll.
Councilmember Dietrich.
Here.
Councilmember Pointer.
Here.
Councilmember Sherbrink.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Schmidt will not be.
Yes, and we would like to send our condolences and sympathies and prayers to the Linda and Jay Schmidt. They lost their son this morning, so she's unable to be with us today. So please keep them in your thoughts and prayers. Also, it appears we have a student here with us today. Is that correct?
Yes.
And where are you from? Would you mind standing and telling us where you're from?
My name's Henry. I'm from Eastwood Cannon School over in Winter.
Okay, well, thank you for joining us tonight. Okay. First thing tonight, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
To move.
Okay.
Second.
All right, Bill?
Yes.
Marian?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, next is our public input period. Please state your name and address for the record before proceeding with any comments. And also, we're going to have everybody, we have a new podium here tonight. So we are asking people, if you are going to speak, to please come to the podium and state your name and address from there. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, with the overall public input period limited to 30 minutes. So a little bit after 5:30, this will be over. Under Iowa Open Meetings laws, the City Council can take no formal action on comments given during the public input period, which do not relate to action items on the agenda. Is there anybody who would like to speak to the council tonight?
I'll be the first. I'm Donna Boss, Executive Director for Delaware County Economic Development, 200 East Main here in Manchester. I would like to have the council, I would like to respectfully reconsider the Grand Avenue project that's on the agenda for this evening for several reasons. Number one, the Grand Avenue extension would be mainly a safe routes to school route. Number two, the number of federal dollars coming into the project for this grant, again, grants do not have to be repaid. A federal grant of this magnitude will assist us, again, safe routes to school, along with the opportunity to get more of the our citizens from the north and to be able to get down to the other. Number three is having a progressive fair board at this time, being able to assist with the land. Our Fairgrounds is a huge economic engine that assists with not only activities during that mega week in July, but all the other programs that they do throughout. Again, I can't stress enough the economic vitality that our Delaware County Fair and Fairgrounds supports this community. The eight-inch water main extension would be huge in this area. Our Delaware County Fair, again, when it rains, the pond that we have behind the north end of the Delaware County show ring. It's a safety issue. It's a huge issue. Our Delaware County cattlemen have put thousands of dollars into that project of remodeling, along with the fair board, again, to be able to look at that. And again, the quality of life opportunity. The state of Iowa looks at many of our communities throughout. It's tourism, the trails, to help bring outdoor recreation to our community and our county is just key. So again, I would respectfully ask that you reconsider the Grand Avenue extension. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Katie Dohmeyer, Manager, Delaware County Fairgrounds, 200 East Acre Street. I want to start out by saying that the Fairgrounds has always tried very hard to be a good partner to the city of Manchester. And regardless of your decision tonight, we will maintain that partnership in any way possible. I do ask that you take a look at the Grand Avenue extension and from this vantage point. And that is, we approached Mike Beck, the owner of the property to the north of the bus barn, probably five to six years ago, to purchase that 35 acres. At that time, Mike made it very clear to us that there was a proposed street and that by purchasing that property, that we should fully expect that there would be a street extension going through that property. We accepted that and made plans to be a partner to the city to put that street through. That includes a donation of land to work with you. We had also partnered on the first piece of Grand Avenue and partnered with you at that time, donation of land, et cetera. I simply want to state tonight that just as you serve from an elected body of officials, I too serve to a newly elected body of officials. And while I'd like to sit here and state that no matter when you decide to put this street in, that the same agreement will be enforced, I just want to make it very clear that that may not be the case. I'm not saying that is any sort of threat, but simply to state that we have been sitting on this piece of ground now for approximately four years through the process of trying to purchase it, knowing that we have permanent improvements that we want to make and we want to find a way to utilize this ground, including putting in infrastructure, et cetera. So I simply just want to state that when it comes to timelines, I'm not 100% sure how long the Fairgrounds can sit on this piece of property that we've spent a lot of money on to have this proposed street and down the line. It may be difficult to offer the same opportunity. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Yes.
All right, I'm Tersa Water, 2328 Jefferson Road. My comments tonight apply to this agenda and previous agendas. Until recently, I have monitored the City Council and have trusted their actions and judgment. I want to thank all of you for becoming involved and serving our city. I am pleased that you are getting some exposure to the complicated facets of our government. I hope you are beginning to understand there is more to your role than expected. Our community has been built by the vision and efforts of the involved and passionate individuals and organizations, those that make a difference instead of complaining and criticizing. Don't take all of our progress for granted. To be a leader in this great city, you must have critical thinking and have a strategic vision for our future. Leading with assumptions and false information will result in our community becoming stagnant and dealing with turmoil. In my career, I have learned the following lessons. Stay professional and be respectful. Abide by a code of conduct and be a person of high integrity. Listen with an open mind. Do what's right. Know that your actions and words have an overall impact now and in the future. Never assume you know the whole story. Do your homework. Accountability and oversight. Understand your role in the big picture. Use common sense and reason. I am honored to serve and volunteer my time on the Airport Committee, Manchester Enterprises, and Delaware County Economic Development. We are working relentlessly to try to retain and recruit businesses in industries. The average citizen may not understand, but would be greatly impacted if there were layoffs, closures, or just the basic lack of interest or marketability of our community in the eyes of current and future prospects. We need your support and cooperation in these efforts. I urge you to reconsider your perspective on our airport and hear the whole story. On behalf of the engaged and involved people of Manchester, I challenge you to work constructively with an open mind. The volunteers, the city employees, business owners, property owners, and forward-thinking citizens are counting on you. Let us not be so bitter and work on being better. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
I'm Jackie Fearman, 308 South Wayne Street, Manchester, Iowa. Donna Boss already addressed many of the items regarding the Grand Avenue extension that I had listed as benefits of this project, and I'm glad to see that it is being readdressed on the agenda tonight. In reviewing all the information, the Grand Avenue Extension Project would be fully covered with the donation of the land from the Delaware County Fairgrounds that they previously did. Local option sales tax of $625,000, that's 1% sales tax that we, all individuals in Manchester, paid. The road use tax fund of $101,000, that is a state tax, and part of a water fund of $50,000. In essence, that would take care of the funding for this. There would be no additional taxes assessed to the residents of Manchester. As a platform for several of our City Council members, they ran on the agenda of reducing taxes. So I see no reason to vote no for this Grand Avenue extension. The outcome, if you do vote this down, will be that we will have to pay, or the city will have to pay, the the engineer's estimates. And at this time, I understand that is $48,200. So that would then go to the cost of the city and the taxpayers, at the taxpayer's expense. So to me, that is a negative. So I strongly urge you to relook at this agenda. I'm glad to see that it's on the agenda tonight and to look at all the positive aspects that this Grand Avenue would do for our community, for our citizens, for the students of West Delaware School, and it'd be an asset. So, thank you.
Anybody else?
Josh Schulte, 100 and 1/2 East Main here in Manchester. So, a lot of great speakers, great points. Don't want to, I'll kind of keep it short and sweet, don't want to bore everybody, but just wanted to say a few things, and I'll kind of keep it high level, but to sum it up, I just want to make sure that, you know, I'm from the community and I moved back here in 2009 and I got involved in a lot of various things and, including private development and real estate in the market. And I just didn't want to be a part of a stagnant, slow-growing or dying community. And I wanted to be involved and do things that were going to make a difference. And so I would just encourage everyone just to, you know, take a hard look at where we're going and have that vision for the community. You know, I want an open government. I don't want a closed or shut down government. We know what that's like at a very high level and we don't need that locally. I want to be a part of a local community that wants to do business and grow in a positive way. And I did a little research. I thought it was kind of interesting just in terms of relativity. So in terms of asset value in our community, so on a residential side, we have 340, just over $340 million worth of residential assets here. Commercial, and mind you, residential makes up 76% of our asset class. Commercial is 86.6 million, that's roughly 20%. And industrial is 17.3% or 17.3 million or 3.9%. So if those numbers don't tell you something in and of themselves, we're heavily weighted on the residential side. I think we've made some good strides the last few years on the residential, but we do need more business. We do need more industrial. I think we can all agree on that. And then you factor in debt. So that is interesting, various opinions on that. But when you look at our debt load as a community, it's nine, I believe, 9.3 million. You guys are welcome to correct me if I'm wrong, but what I feel is there's good debt and there's bad debt, you know? And I think we all need to understand the asset debt and the liability debt. The three other things I want to cover real quickly is people, process, and product. So essentially, all those added up, we're entrusting you guys with a $444 million organization, essentially. And we can't take the same level of thinking that we may have in our household budget. And I'm not saying anybody does that, but we have to be looking out 10, 20, 40, 50 years because some of these things that we may deal with, we have a choice to deal with them now or they're going to deal with us later in a more expensive fashion. I think making wise decisions, listening to our peers, listening to our department heads, listening to the partners, engineers, and our community are a big thing. And I believe, right now, there's so much activity going on in Highway 20, it's crazy. I'm involved in some other projects in other communities and it is wild what's all going on. We have to wake up because there are so many things we could do in this great community that we have. The other is process. So I touched on a little bit, these moves, the streets, the sewer, the infrastructure, these are, some of these are basic moves, and if you don't move on them, they're, like I said, they're going to move on you at a much higher price point. And so, and I know as well as anybody, nothing lasts forever, that's for sure, but
Getting close to five minutes.
Okay, all right. Lastly is product. So Manchester is our product. We have to be proud of our product here. And I think we could, we could be a little bit more prideful in our community. I think us as citizens need to be a little bit more prideful in our community. And government, local government, needs to meet our basic needs, but I want to encourage big, bold moves and action on some things that are going to attract people here. We have to take care of business, but I also would encourage you guys to think of some big, bold moves on some things that are more attractive based. So, thanks again. I appreciate your guys' expertise and decision-making. It's a tough job. Not everybody wants to do it, but I just encourage you and appreciate your open-mindedness and let's grow. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, this is the only time to talk. If you have anything else you want to talk about, because there's, the only thing we have, a public comment throughout the rest of the meeting tonight is regarding our landscape importance. So, if you have anything to say, otherwise we'll wrap it up. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment. Thank you, everybody. We appreciate that. Great, next item, we have the consent agenda. First item, approval of the minutes of the January 22nd, 24 regular council meeting and the minutes of the January 29th City Council Budget Work Sessions and the January 31st Council Work Session and February 5th Council Work Session. Next item is Resolution 17, approving the bills. We need a motion to acknowledge receipt of city reports and minutes, and I believe we've got those annual reports from the building, water department, wastewater treatment, aquatic center, fire department, and our monthly activities for revenue expenses, fund balance, the Airport Committee, planning zoning, wastewater treatment plan, and library board. We have, next item is a motion to approve liquor licenses for Dollar General, Chung Garden, and St. Mary's School Gala. Next item is approval of Resolution 18, approving property tax abatement applications submitted by property owners in recognized urban revitalization areas and authorizing the transmittal of the approved applications to the Delaware County Assessor. I believe there were three properties, four properties, Grant Street, Mason Court, South Brewer, and West Marion Street. Need a motion to approve Resolution 19, and that's amending the salary for a new circulation clerk or an increase to the circulation clerk at the library. Need a motion to approve Resolution 20, authorizing fund transfers for the fiscal year ending June 30th of 2024. Did you want to speak to that now, Erin?
These are standard transfers that we included in our budget for different projects, for the employee benefits, some debt service transfers, and then the local option transfers into the appropriate funds.
Thank you. Next, a motion to approve payment of a claim totaling $16,236 to Berington Group for Engineering Services for the Grand Avenue Street Extension Project. Next item is a motion to approve the payment of claims totaling $667 to Purgram for Engineering Services for the 2024 Street Improvement Utility Coordination. I need a motion to adopt Resolution 21. It's the approving the preliminary and final plat for River Point Fifth Subdivision. And then I need a motion to adopt Resolution 22, approving the preliminary and final plat for West Brook Edition Phase Two. I believe that both of those were approved by the PMZ. Next, a motion to set March 11th at 5:00 p.m. as the date and time for a public hearing on the voluntary annexation application of, is it Cammiller? Is that correct? Tree Service LLC for the property at 1672 220th Street. And then I need a motion to adopt Resolution 26, approving the subdivision plat for Houlihan Egg, and that's subdivision number three. There before you is the consent agenda. I'll take a motion in a second and then link it up for discussion.
And approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay. And you can ask any questions that you have. New discussion. Okay, hearing none. Marian?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Brian? All right, thank you. Next, it's 5:22, and I'm going to open the public hearing on ordinance one, and that's ordinance amending, code of ordinances for the city of Manchester by amending Chapter 165, Section 26, Landscape and Screening Standards. And do you want to help explain this, Tim, so people know what we're talking about?
Sure. Planning zoning commission is part of our ordinance, we do have a landscaping standard requirements for new developments, whether it's new commercial property that's built or residential. This program, right now, what we're looking at doing with planning zoning is also recommending is adopting standards that require green space landscaping within residential, new residential developments. With, right now, what they're looking at is a minimum of one per lot that's developed now. Depending upon the development, we can look at ways to place the trees within the subdivision to equal out what they have for green space requirements. If a lot is designed such that it wouldn't make sense for them to be able to do it, there could be flexibility where that tree's planted. Maybe they have some green space they're putting together for a common area for subdivision. It's just a standard residential development with houses every 66 feet, lot width and everything. Minimum requirement is a one and one and one-half inch caliber tree per residential lot. So again, it's just a minimum standard, but it does address the fact that we are losing a number of trees to the end of the ashbor. We lost a lot of trees with the elm tree. What's that?
Dutch elm.
Dutch elm, but there was maples. Maple trees are dying off at a higher rate right now, too. So we're trying to encourage redevelopment, reforestation of the city.
And just, I know that we talked about this at a goal-setting session about increasing the canopy. We also talked about it, I believe, when the University of Iowa students were here, that was one of the things with projects that they worked on. And it came up again at our Keep Iowa Beautiful thing that we talked about when we had a bunch of community people together, canopy was really an important thing. Anybody have anything they'd like to add to? This is time for public comment.
Something.
Sure.
State name?
Yeah.
116 Liberty, Manchester. I've been around this town all my life. I've seen a lot of trees go down. I've also planted a lot of trees. My dad planted a lot of trees, probably more than anybody else in this town. I think this is an excellent, excellent thing to get going, to keep going. The trees are of a service in so many ways, not only property taxes or property values, I should say, shade in the summertime, oxygen in the air, I mean, they are things that we all need to be putting in as much as possible. So I appreciate whoever developed the ordinance. I think it's a great ordinance and I encourage them. Definitely go forward with this one. We need it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, at 5:26, I'm going to close the public hearing. And before you, if you guys are in agreement, we have a motion to proceed with the first consideration and adoption of ordinance one.
I want a motion to proceed.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion or questions or anything? All right, Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Marian?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Next. We have a motion to proceed. Just a second here. Oh. We, motion, or I guess, action and discussion of for the special assessment policy that we discussed the other evening. And I think everybody got an opportunity to review that. Did you have any further questions on it, or did you want to tell about what we came up with?
Yeah. As we worked through our assessment policy, some of the changes that we looked at during it was, previously it was capped, under state law, there's a cap on residential and any assessment of 25% of the land value and building value. What the discussion has turned into was putting the cap at 25% of the land value for residential properties. Commercial and industrial properties would still remain the same, that's 25% on land and building value for those properties. Curbing gutter assessments, we used to charge 100% of curbing gutter cost against the jointy property owner, linear foot. We are capping that at 50%. So if there is an estimate of $30 per linear foot of curbing gutter, based on a 30-inch curbing gutter, homeowner or property owner would be assessed $15, or 50% of that cost. Sidewalks and driveways are still assessed 100% of their expenses related to their installation. Those are impacted by the assessed cost of that 25% of the land value. Private service laterals for water and sewer will still be assessed 100% of the cost associated with connection from the main to the right away of the property line of the affected property. We still have an overall limit, even though we've taken out the water sewer as part of the cap, there is still an overall limit of, or 25% of building in lot value that we can't exceed under state law. So the initial limit on the paving is the 25% of the land value. And that would, again, impact the residential properties.
Did everybody get a chance to review it then? Okay, all right. If there are no, go ahead.
Well, I'm just going to say this. I personally think this is the wrong time to do this. And the reason is because we just finished a section of East Main where we did a certain assessment. Now, if we change the assessment and the next section gets assessed at a different value or a different way, I don't think that's fair. To me, that's a little bit like playing football. I'll use something that you all know about because of yesterday. It's like saying, you know what, it's halftime and we're behind, so we're going to change the rules. I get 22 points every time I make a touchdown and you get two, if you make one. I don't think it's fair. I think that because we assessed at a certain value at a certain rate, I'll call it, for the first section that we did of East Main, we should be assessing the second section the same way. In two years, if all goes well, we will be turning up Anderson Street. When we turn up Anderson Street, we will then be in basically fully residential area. When we move into the residential area, that's when I personally would like to see us change the assessments. We can make it maybe a little bit easier on people. I know that there are houses in the
I know that there are houses in the section of East Main, but I just think there were sections, I I just think you you how do I say this? You just wanna stay consistent, that's my theory. Once we turn up Anderson, that's when I personally believe we should reassess, re-assign assessment. It has been brought to my attention that there are people who will not vote for a resolution of necessity to do the East Main Street project if we do not agree to their special assessment policy. I believe that for the good of Manchester, we have to continue the East Main Street project. We can't stop it at this point. So I apologize to those of you that paid one assessment a few years ago. But I'm gonna have to vote for this because we've got to do the street. We can't put it off. We have very, very old infrastructure underneath the street. We don't know what's gonna happen to it, we already have at least two places where it needs to be fixed. We can't put it off and put it off, so I will be voting for this against my better judgment.
Any other comments? If the council is ready to take action on this policy, then I look for a motion.
I make the motion to approve.
For your second? All right, no further discussion? Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yeah.
Marian?
Yes.
Brian? Oh, you can vote for this part.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, you can. It's a policy thing. It's a policy thing.
It's just not a conflict of interest.
It's a policy.
Sure, you're good on that because it affects policy across the city, not just you, not just your property.
Okay.
But a good question.
Yep, okay, all right, thank you. Next, and before you, we have uh resolution seven. I need a motion to adopt it, it will approve proceeding with the ability to assess a portion of the cost of the twenty twenty-four East Main Street project improvement project to the benefit of property owners. Looking for a motion for that.
Yes, I'll make a motion to award the contract.
Sir, a second?
Now, this is for the resolution.
Did I skip one? Oh, I apologize.
You do the resolution of necessity first.
Oh, I thought that's what I read, I'm sorry, I read the one below it, I apologize.
Bill skipped that, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that what it was? Okay. Yeah, it's resolution seven approving proceeding with the ability to assess a portion of the cost of the twenty twenty-four East Main Street. I did do that right, okay, so is that what you're motioning then, Bill?
Yes.
Okay. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. All right. Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Marian?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay. All right, next, I have resolution thirteen. I need a resolution awarding the contract for the twenty twenty-four East Main Street Improvement Project to top grade excavating in the amount of one million three hundred forty-four thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Marian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Brian? Okay. Next. I need a motion to adopt resolution twenty-four, it'll prove an amended agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for a surface transportation block grant program federal aid swap project for the twenty twenty-four East Main Project. The amendment will increase the S T B G federal aid swap funds. The city will receive from six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to six hundred and eighty-four thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars. I need a motion to approve that.
I'm always willing to make a motion to get more money, so I will.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Um, Jim, would you be willing to uh, discuss some of that's that grant we were talking about earlier?
Yeah, the the city of Manchester qualifies for this funding through our regional planning affiliation eight. Uh, so that ECIA in to view, uh, because our population is above five thousand, we have direct entitlement funds. The way our R P A region works, uh, we are, uh, they do break out funding based on size and cities. So you have counties that get the funding and cities above five thousand give this funding as a direct allocation. You have to use that money on a federal aid route, which East Main Street is. Uh, if our population is to drop below five thousand, uh, we could lose that directed entitlement fund. And so then we would lose that, we're right now, we're actually about a hundred fourteen thousand dollars a year in entitlement funds. We're able to accumulate that over a period of years, and right now with what we have going on, we're actually borrowing ahead for a couple of years, we have other entities in the R P A that there's not plenty of using their funding just yet. So what it does is it just back those, so the next few years, that money will go back into what they had. Um, so the total funding that we have available to us is at six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, which is about thirty-nine thousand dollars more than what we were projecting.
Once and it's bracketed down if we do drop below five thousand?
If we go below five thousand, all the cities that are in the Ford County areas that are below five thousand compete uh, for two hundred fifty thousand dollars about every year, and it's a competitive grant. So it significantly reduces what we have available to work on projects.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Marian?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Ryan?
I'm sure on this one, uh, all you're doing is approving an amendment to the grant we're applying in that one this one.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
All good questions.
Yeah, yeah, no.
All right. All right, um, next, um. The city council did not adopt resolution fourteen, finally approving and confirming plan specification form of contract and estimate of cost of Grand Avenue Extension Project. Council members Dietrich, Weiner, and Sherbrining have requested the resolution be placed on the agenda for reconsideration. So I need uh, I guess discussion, and then if you wanna vote on it.
And there'll be two motions, a motion to reconsider and then once the if, and how that goes, and then there would be a motion to adopt the resolution.
So, do I have a motion to reconsider?
I'll make the motion reconsider.
Okay.
I'll second.
Joe?
Yes.
Marian?
Yes.
Brian?
No.
Bill?
Yes.
Okay. So for discussion.
Well, I feel Grand Avenue Extension is the important part. I've seen flooding go through the fairgrounds. Um, I like what Jason came up with as far as helping to divert some of that water and yet help capture some of the nitrates that wash in off of the farm fields that are native in their area. Um, by putting in the taller grass to help absorb that, to help clean the water before it does go down our storm sewers, storm drains. Um, I think it's gonna be very, very beneficial to us. Uh, all this, and the sidewalk I feel is gonna be a huge benefit to the people up on the north end. The other big benefit is being on the fire department for thirty-some years. Um, protection as far as ambulance, fire trucks, being able to access that area in case of real bad storms, and I've seen them, um, I think it's gonna be super vital, so.
So first off, I'd like to thank everybody that reached out to give their input on, on all of this, um. When we voted on it the last time to shoot it down, I felt confident in my vote then, after time had gone by. Wasn't so confident in it. So I requested I had this add to the uh agenda basically at the last second, pretty much literally. So we could look, I could look into it more because I felt like I was missing something. And not being able to see the next twenty years ahead of us, so to say, to see what it was gonna do if we did push it through, um. And then if we don't, if we just stay with where we're at and not push the Grand Ave extension and look to see what that would look like as well, so. There's a lot of it that's into it and there's a lot that I feel like I missed on.
I always thought it was an important project, I've always been supportive of it. Um, we've worked on this project, or at least seems like forever, but I think it was maybe only three years that it was really in front of us. But we have looked very seriously at this project, what it needed, why we needed it. Um, ramifications are if we do not do it, and um, I just think it's a really, really important step for us.
Do you have anything to add, Brian?
No.
Okay. All right. So with that said, did you have any other things you wanted to discuss or did somebody wanna make the motion to go ahead? And either approve it again or?
We would reconsider already. I reconsidered, yeah, so we would go to, if the council would just proceed a motion to adopt resolution fourteen, which would be the resolution approving the new plans specs form of contract and estimate of cost.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Any further discussion? Bill?
Yes.
Marian?
Yes.
Brian?
No.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yep. Then after that, I need a motion to consider the bids then, is that the one I'm going to or do I do the motion necessity or the um?
They're not awarding things, what we'll do right now is, uh, the council is considering the bids. Uh, Pierce Tovin, the bid submit of the apparent low bid, uh, Jason, I'm directing if I'm wrong, but that low bid was seven hundred and seventy-five thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty cents, and it's approximately a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars below what the engineer's estimate was.
So we're doing a consideration of the bids then, is the next one?
Uh, there's no actual action.
To take on that, no, this is just reviewing.
That's just the review of the bids at first, the next action item would be resolution fifteen.
Okay. So resolution fifteen, and I need a motion awarding the contract for the Grand Ave Extension Project to Pierce Tovin Construction for seven hundred seventy-five thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty cents.
So moved, and I would also like to say we got some great bids on this, so. We're lucky to have that many bids and that many good bids.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Marian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Brian?
No.
Okay. All right, next, resolution twenty-five, is that we're on then?
Yes.
Okay.
No, but that one, we, if we are moving ahead with the project, this was a resolution, if we were determining not to proceed with the project, then we had some grant money that we had already agreed to, so this resolution would be rescinding our resolution approving the um
Contract.
The contract for the grant.
It's for the trail.
For the trail portion, so.
If we don't wanna proceed with it though, we just don't do anything, I mean, do we want the trail or don't want the trail?
Yes.
Yeah, there's a, we don't want to take any action if we're working, if we're finally moving forward with the trail. The trail was separated out from the street because the street had federal funds tied to it and increased what those costs would be because of Davis Bacon Wages and other things that we'd have to do. The trail itself would be done in twenty twenty-five, December twenty twenty-five. Uh, we have a two hundred fifty thousand dollar grant, cap grant. Uh, the project estimate was three hundred and thirty-six thousand, we haven't gone up a bid on that yet, that would be something we bid on later. Uh, but the trail area will be prepped as part of the the road. So there, no action has to be taken, uh, if we were to turn down the road, we would turn down this trail as well.
So are we just moving on then? We're just moving on?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, next, um, and you're sad to hear that Jim's decided to retire, and with that comes a police chief search, and we got some information about helping us do that. Do you wanna?
It is Jeff Kaler Consulting, uh, Jeff does come highly recommended, he's done a number of police chief searches. One of them recently in our area would be the Big Four Police Chief. What does the specialty uh skills that we need to have the chief, I want someone that has knowledge and ability to recruit chiefs to send them their applications and then to do the background checks. Um, this person will come in, they'll interview the council, they'll interview employees to see what we need for next police chief, they'll interview cer- certain members of the public as well. So really, this was a comprehensive search, it will provide us with the best opportunity to find the best candidate. Whether that candidate is in-house or outside of the community, we wanna make sure that whoever we hire is a good fit for the community and they're a good fit for us. Uh, he, he does have a couple of different options, uh, the council can elect to do it by uh uh, option one, which is pay as it goes, he charges a hundred fifty dollars an hour, up to fifteen thousand dollars. You can do a cap, uh, let me pull this up real quick, I'm sorry. My eye is working. Yeah, in a limited hour, hourly rate, so not to exceed amount thirteen thousand dollars plus expenses. The hourly rate comes into play because it depends on how many candidates we actually get for the police chief. Uh, and how many people he's actually having to go through and and review. As he noted before, it is getting increasingly difficult to find police officers and police chiefs. We are competing with larger cities as far as the officers pay go compared to what our chief's pay is. We're competing with different law enforcement, uh, sheriff's departments. Uh, it's not uncommon for the state to raid our, our force as well and recruit people away from us. So it is harder to find, um, officer, police officers are really in high demand right now. Uh, if we do hire someone from outside the state, we need to make sure that they pass the state required certification test and Jeff is able to provide those testing. So to me, it it's all inclusive, I think it makes sense, um, and will help us guide us as we go through that search.
Do we have to make a decision on the pay style or just the fact that we're going to accept him?
Either one of them. If you want us to move forward with working with Jeff, we can do that, you just tell me, proceed to put together what we wanna do. If you wanna sit there and go, we'll wait until, um, next time to determination of whether we'll do it with the hourly rate or the cap, it's up to the council. But I want to get started because Jim's retiring May thirty-first, and that's gonna hit us faster than.
With twenty twenty-five?
I'd like to make a decision tonight about how we're gonna pay because I think it's only fair when you're dealing with a person and you're trying to set up a situation of working with them, you need to be able to tell them what they should expect. So I personally would like to go ahead and make a decision of which way we'll pay them.
I don't think you can. I don't wanna go too cheap, I wanna make sure that we get the right guy to fill Jim's shoes. Police chief is very important in the city, for sure.
So do you have a preference as to which way we would go?
Was he giving us a better deal if we, I mean, he'll do everything if we have? Or which?
He's, he's doing everything, there, there's a cap of thirteen thousand, but if he does that and we have thirty applicants involved, he's capped at thirteen thousand, we have six applicants, you know, it would, it may have been cheaper for him to do the hundred.
Okay, now I understand, okay.
So a lot of it's based on how much.
How many applicants they get?
Hundred and fifty an hour?
Mm-hmm.
You have them eighty-six hours? Not thirteen thousand?
Yeah, but there's a lot of dollars you make, a lot of.
Right.
Lot of digging.
Towards the thirteen thousand, I, I agree the hundred and fifty an hour, not a bad deal, you know, if you get six, you just don't know.
I would like to think that we're attracted to the community, we'll, we'll get a number of people looking at, at the area.
Is this one of those things that if we do cap it at thirteen thousand to get us started, that we would be able to go back and relook at it or you just gotta stand with what we go with tonight?
Well, again, it's thirteen thousand plus expenses, so there'll be some mileage, there'll be some caffeine and stuff like that that it'll charge outside of that as well.
But so is the fifteen.
Honestly, that, that has, that is standard on any professional services agreement. So I'm comfortable if you guys want to do thirteen thousand. I'm comfortable with a hundred and fifty dollars per hour. And again, he, he's offered not to exceed a month of fifteen thousand.
Mary Ann, you're the mathematician.
I personally would go with the fifteen thousand, and the reason is because I think it's going to take a long time to do this, and I'd rather have, I'd rather be paying for somebody to do the job than not paying them, and they're exceeding the number of hours, and then I feel like I'm not giving a hundred percent. I'm sorry, that's just how I think. I, I want to pay them to do the job and do a good job, so I would go with fifteen.
But again, that, that would be a cap on the hour.
That's right.
So it'd be less than that, less than that, we save some money.
Jim, you got kind of an idea of how long it took you to fill this last position, granted not a police chief, but.
Or an officer?
From just an officer?
Oh, boy. I, I can get you pretty, I can get you fairly close. Posting a job right there. I've probably got in excess fifteen, twenty hours, probably close to twenty hours to fill on. And that's not done yet. I mean, I've got a person selected, but we're going through the testing, so we can ask more. I bet I got twenty hours in to find it. Of work. Backgrounds take time. The, the checking references take time. Interviews take time. I mean, you're talking officer versus dispatcher. I mean, I may spend half hour, forty-five minutes on the first interview, another half hour, forty-five minutes on the second interview, follow-up, you know, to try to select a person. I know the last, I also applied for the first job. That came open several years ago. I think that interview was almost two hours. So, yeah, yeah, you can, you can wrap up a lot of hours really quick. If you don't mind, I'd spend the fifteen to make the rest of it. Yeah, I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna burn up a bunch of time really quick. I mean, and you're talking about, you're not talking like a police officer, you're talking a police chief, so. Yeah.
Do you need a motion on this, Tim?
I would like a motion, see if we're going to spending money.
Okay, Mary Ann, do it.
Okay, I would like to propose that we spend fifteen thousand because we'll never replace him, but we're going to do the best we can.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
All right. You too. All right, Mary Ann?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Then we have some nuisance property updates. Is that from Jim?
I think we, that should be in your package. We don't have very many pending. I think there's really only one pending right now. We're waiting for a default hearing. I talked to RJ about it this morning. We really need to sit down with Tim. I'm sure there are more to be done. We just, they haven't been had, we need to get them handed over back to us to keep it moving.
We want to thank you for being very diligent on this. It's been.
It's, it's a lot easier when you put it on a, when you make us give you a report every.
Anybody have any questions further for Jim on that? Okay, I saw Jason come in first. I'm gonna let you go first, Jason.
So really no update, other than I'll work on getting contracts. You had Pierce Tovin pulled together, contract bond forms, the insurance requirements together to the councils, so those can be reviewed and approved prior to actually issuing a notice to proceed on the project and then work on identifying schedule with them and coordinating with the, the bare ground, so making sure everything goes smoothly here as we unfold with the project. Other than that, unless there's any questions? Anybody? Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, your time.
Brian?
From our side here, there are a few serious signs left to draft on East Main, but it will be cleaned up when construction starts, so we'll proceed or find that grid, uh, for the one there. I'll coordinate with DOT since it is STPG funding, so we'll get that all in progress here. My other thing, been really talking to Tim with last few months, has been flood pollution. I think there's a meeting coming on in a month, we'll sit in on, but that's probably kind of the next big picture of the city.
Are there anything more regarding this Marion Bridge yet?
Not been new on that since they did the funding will be on, basically just a request for funding will go over in the next period.
Okay.
And that will do that until, I guess, August or so. I'm pretty sure we gotta gotta check my notes. I think it's another year we're gonna inspect, yeah.
Okay.
There's definitely maintenance work that needs to be done, but that funding will be critical because it will probably be pushing on the landmark.
Okay, all right, okay. Any questions, Brian? All right, thank you. All right, Jim?
I have nothing to add.
Okay, Tim?
Uh, March sixth is a local leader day in Des Moines. We meet with legislators. Are there any council members, mayor, if you're interested, let me know.
Yes.
It starts at eight AM. The networking, talking legislators at nine o'clock, welcome. And this is again in Des Moines, so travel down there. If you want to attend, this is, we'll go until about three o'clock.
What did you say that?
March sixth. No, what was the meeting?
Oh, we're meeting with legislators, meeting with the Isle League Assembly to talk about legislation that's going on. This will meet just before the second funnel date. The first funnel is the end of this week. Held by the Isle League of City is doing a legislative update. Try to get everybody put together and talk about leadership mentality for growth and stability and effective leadership. They will have lunch, then they pick everything up to the Capitol. Try to meet your local legislators.
So we can let Dan and Craig know that we're coming that day then, do, or?
Yeah, so if you let me know, I can coordinate things.
Okay. Mark me down.
Okay.
All right, Aaron?
Nothing.
Okay. I'll start at this then, since you, you get to start this time, instead of being the very last. Brian? Okay, Mary Ann?
Thank you all for coming. It's nice to see this many people that are meeting. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Joe?
Just if anybody's got any concerns or projects or ideas or anything that's coming up, you can get, you can find my email on the city site. I'd like to open the dialogue before we're getting into votes and then going back and re-voting.
Bill?
Uh, once again, thanks for the nice big crowd. Maybe we can think about someday finding a bigger chumber.
We, I'll, I'll be honest, you know, we've started televising with the Owls. They work, but they work on the cheap. It's not the best setup. The Owls are getting better at learning to focus on who's talking. Having the podium is, is a nice setup. Aaron and I are going to look at some different tables and chairs in here, because this table looks great for a meeting room, like we're sitting around it. But not so much for us having everyone sit on one side. It takes a lot of space. We'll bring back some options for the council.
Okay, no, that's all I got. Thank you.
Okay. I just, I don't really have anything else to add. Again, we're keeping Linda and her family in our prayers. And we'd like to thank you all for joining us tonight, and we hope you have a wonderful rest of your week. Thank you. And I need a motion to adjourn from Brian, second from Joe, and we are adjourned.